Welcome to the Village of Buchanan workshop and special meeting of April 25th, 2023. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'm going to first start with the Buchanan Running Club. Are you here representing them this evening?
John Bell's on our way.
Okay, all right. Oh, okay. All right. We'll we'll get back to that. Thanks. Okay, so first on our agenda is a discussion with AMS. This is the project, the 148 unit project behind the hardware store on 9A. So who are our representatives today?
Good evening, Diana Cola from the firm of Delphella DeMellon, Ryan Cotton, Wise and Whitaker. Mark might go and be here tonight, so prepare to listen to any comments that you might have on the EAF that was submitted earlier and to request that, once you are comfortable with it, to set a public comment. To consider the petition. And also tonight, you might propose a follow-up.
My name is Aaron Warner. I'm also filling in for a couple of folks that have been working on this project. I'm happy to answer questions.
That is strange.
On the EAF.
Okay, thank you. Yes, we received that on Friday. So thank you. We've all been reviewing it. So I'm not sure who to direct this at, either you or to our planner, but, you know, for the audience to go over what the process is going forward with this. Just, you know, so we're trying to have the public follow with this whole process. Would, who would be comfortable to do that?
I can do that if you'd like.
Thank you. I'd appreciate it.
Thanks, David. So we had to recall, the applicant had submitted a petition to rezone the C1, C2 district to allow for multifamily development at a density beyond that which already allowed for. And as part of that petition, they had requested that the village board would do the, approve the, once the zoning is in place, would approve the site plan and the site plan. And that's a little bit different than what you currently have in your code, which provides for the issues of that's very disconserving.
No, I'm making faces because I'm watching this going on up here and we're all trying to keep a straight face, but we have something going on. We have things going on under the table and it's kind of distracting us. I'm sorry.
You have a straight face, boy, I tell you.
Oh, you gotta have a little fun. You gotta laugh a little bit, right? Sorry, David. I know it was a little tough to stay focused there, but. Yeah, we'll get, yeah.
Yeah, let's wait for Marcus.
Never know what's gonna happen here. That's all I can tell you.
I see what it is. This is not.
Is, oh, you know Stella is here from the Buchanan Running Club and John Bell. I know our microphone isn't working, but maybe somebody could maybe come and speak by George here until they can get that. Stella, if you'd like to come up to my.
Very good.
Sorry Stella, we're completely out. Oh, I think we might.
I'm a sound guy now.
Thank you. It was a lot of work in those.
Wow, Marcus, that was great. Thanks for the laugh.
If you want to have a woman come up.
No, Stella, it's fine. Yeah, no, I just thought, you know, if we had that in between, that, that's good.
All right. So let me, I'll, I'll go back in these videos. So the, an application has been made and the rezone portion of the zoning code to allow for, and the property in question is located in a part of it's in the C1, part of it's in the M District. So the application requires rezoning the entire property in this well. And then applying the special permit that allows for enhanced density. And what the application is proposing at this point is to, it's for the zoning amendment that would allow for additional residential density in the older late history. And that would be subject to a special permit being issued by the village board. And the site plan approval will be limited to by the village board. And this is a little bit different than what the code currently provides for where there's a special permit that's issued by the planning board and the site plan by the planning board. But here, because the, there's a request for additional density, the law doesn't dispute because this is a discretionary act that the zoning is to keep the matter with the village board, but allow for a circulation for review and recognition by the planning board. So the planning board is still a part of this process. So your board in February issued a notice of intent to act as an agency under CECL. CECL is the state environmental quality review app. And that that's the environmental regulations that you have to follow as part of this process. And it's a, an involved process as part of the notice of intent you circulated the documents to a number of different interested entities involved, which is like New York State DOT, Westchester County, New York State DDC, the planning board, the zoning board, the city of Greensville, and some other highway communities. None of whom objected to the report acting as a basis. So at the last meeting, we discussed kind of the, the types of information that would be needed as part of the expanded environmental assessment form. And so that included, as we saw in the, those codes, there are special permits used, which the applicant is applying for. And there are certain technical reports and documents that would be included. And we listed all those as part of our February 11th review memo. So the applicant has been in the process of preparing a document, which you received as mayor, as you mentioned, received late last week. And it's, it's the expanded environmental assessment form. And what's important here is that, and I had an opportunity to review this with AKRF, the government consultant, on at least two different occasions to ask for additional information clarification or to ask for some additional revisions to the text. And the document provides for a response to all the information that's needed to consider a special permit. It includes a variety of information related to the planning and zoning, particularly how the project responds to the compliance plan and the design guidelines. There's a cost benefit analysis that's required as part of the discussion of permits. That's included. There's a section on the environment, which includes steep slopes and black lines and soil water management and infrastructure. And then lastly, there's a very important section on traffic. So the applicant has included a series of conceptual plans, which helps you and will help the public understand what the proposed action is, what the potential impact is. And the memo that I provided to you earlier this week, in response to their submission, talks about the next steps. So it's important, I think, to evaluate what's been provided, but we don't have to necessarily have all of the answers. I think part of, and that's part of the process for CECL, is to make sure that there's enough information and it's in sufficient detail so that the public understands what's proposed and what the impacts are. I mean, we have the trips to coming out onto Alton Post Road. What's the disturbance to the overall site? How much water and sewer will be generated? But understanding that, at this point, all the villages and decaying, is the zoning petition. And at some point, once the zoning is in place, the applicant will come back and they will submit for the special permit and site plan. So what they've provided for is certainly, I think, a very good start. If we understand that, and I think certainly there's an expectation that you may want to focus on site plan details where the electrical vehicle charging stations, where is the recycling where it can be picked up? And while those are all important questions, those will be, those are details that we'll get to eventually when it goes to site plan. And I think it's also important to note that, and I think you've mentioned this specifically, is that that the planning board plays, still plays an active role as part of this process, that they have a certain level of expertise and training and that this project will, and the application will eventually be referred to them specifically, I would hope, that look at it, evaluate it, give us some feedback on specific design related issues. So at this point, my understanding of the process kind of, for your board, is that we're at a work session tonight and that if the board feels comfortable, they may want to ask some, for some additional information, make it comfortable with the document as is, but that procedurally, we wanted to have the work session first before your regular meeting next week, where you would formally schedule a public hearing if you felt that that there's been enough information provided and enough detail. And then once that public hearing is scheduled and the document is then formally called into accepted, for lack of a better word, it's made available to the public, based on the village website. It would be provided to all the other interested involved agencies, again, with listed the DOT and DDC and ask their comments back, hopefully by the time you're having your public hearing, if you schedule it in June sometime. So that, that provides, I haven't gone through any of the details, the specifics of the proposed action. I could certainly do that, but from a processing standpoint, I wanted to make sure that you felt comfortable with where we're at and how you can, you know, potentially move forward with that.
So right now, we're not, you know, the site plan is not, you know, important right now. That's when we're going to get to that phase, which I think will be interesting for all of us, that will deal with the landscaping, the stone veneer, which I like that look. Also, it will, you know, so especially the landscaping, I'm pretty interested in that, what it looks like on 9A. But one of the questions I did have related to traffic, and I haven't, you know, we just got that today from our traffic consultant, so I haven't really absorbed that yet. So what I was concerned about, there were three places that they did the traffic study. One was Tate Avenue, one was Craft Lane Intersection 9A, and the other was, I believe, Lindsey Avenue.
Yeah, Lindsey Avenue.
So, but did they do Catherine Street? I don't, I didn't see that. That was my concern.
Okay, so it's a good question. So the applicant prepared a kind of a proposed scope of work. And that was reviewed by Bill Reilly, who is your village's traffic consultant. And that was, and with the understanding that Bill, and I know Bill, he's appeared before you before, has extensive experience working with a number of communities, specifically working with New York State communities. And it was essentially his professional opinion that those three intersections were kind of the base point to begin evaluation. Because as, if you look at those three intersections, and let's say you encounter a problem at one of them, for whatever reason, there's, you know, the volume, then that would lead you to say, all right, well, maybe we need to look at the next intersection. So I think part of what the applicant and Mr. Reilly did was to take a reasonable approach to looking at traffic. I think the memos that you had prepared, Marcus, correctly, I know that something came across my desk, but that was the proposed scope of work prepared by AKRF, and then the review of that by Mr. Reilly.
That's correct.
So I think at this point, there's, there's a comfort level with the professionals. I think that as part of the, the environmental review going forward, that that may be a comment that comes out or requested as part of the, you know, the public comment period once the document has been kind of circulated to the public. But I, again, I want to stress that that the approach was to look at kind of those three critical intersections and evaluate it. And I, I don't have the results in front of me, but the person at AKRF, I don't think there were any particular issues. But again, if there were, that would point to, all right, well, let's look at the next intersection.
And you might want to add that the DOT has to come back with their comments as well. They haven't, they have received that as well. So they might come back with additional comments.
I think there's the craft lane. I don't know if it was understood, but that's one way. It's not, they're not coming out to deny the intersection. That was changed. So the craft lane going into Lindsey Avenue.
The craft lane and Alton Post Road, that was the second, yeah. That's two-way.
Oh, going in there, but the one I'm talking about is from 9A going into Lindsey Avenue, that craft lane. That's one way.
Okay. Opposite side of.
Yeah, it's not where the entrance, the proposed entrance is.
Well, again, that's a very specific question. I think that's a reasonable question to ask once the document is admitted to the public. And again, I think, you know, DOT certainly has to weigh in.
It's still a process. We're still, yeah, we're still at the, we're at the beginning right now.
And I think it's fair to say that comments like that and other comments that may come up where once the document is formally circulated to the public, that there will be a list of questions, the questions from your board, the questions from Mr. Palmer, there'll be additional questions from my office, from the planning board, and others, and that the applicant will be requested to respond to all of those after the public hearing is closed. So that you will have essentially a document like this, and it will be by, and I would suggest to the applicant that they kind of organize it the same way that here, the comments raised on land use and zoning, there are the comments raised on traffic, on utilities, and they would provide responses to those. And those responses may lead to changes in the segment. So the conceptual segment. So I think from a process standpoint, we don't have to have all the answers today. There's still time to ask, plenty of time to ask questions, and that there will be a process where the applicant is responding to all of these subsequent questions.
And the only other thing that I'm concerned about, and I know our fire department spoke to them, and just looking at the diagram here, I'm going to ask, and I'm sure the fire department will want to know what the, going around the building and towards the back of the building, is that, is that enough for emergency vehicles to be able to access all around the building, or three quarters around the building?
Yeah, and I would suggest that, and we could do it anyways, but the fire department would be part of this review process. They're essentially an agency of the village board. So I think they will review it from a technical standpoint. We've already had a discussion with the fire departments that the applicant would understand what the immediate concerns were with respect to access. And I think they've tried to accommodate that. But I think it should be fair that the fire department has an opportunity to take a look at the concept plans and, you know, there may be enough ability with a turning template, the plan to show how access is accommodated for the majority of the students.
Those are my only thoughts, questions right now. Any other board members? Again, if anybody has anything?
No, I, I just, the little bit that I, I reviewed some of it and I, I think I'm ready to move forward. You know, I'm satisfied with what I've read. And I'm sure questions will come up in the future. But I'm satisfied with the data and supplies with so far, the corporate reports that I've read.
I went through, actually, Ceclis' point about the Alton Post Road and Catherine, because that is an intersection that it's a little tough getting in that at times. But I, I feel pretty confident in, you know, going through this, so I think through it thoroughly and it looks pretty good. I'm definitely confident in moving forward. I just really feel myself, just in the middle of this project now, I'm a little, and I read the whole document myself saying I do by afternoon. And then on that right now, so I think I'm ready to move on to the next one.
Yeah, you're saying I have several site plan questions, but, you know, we'll save them. But I feel we have sufficient information here to move forward.
No other questions from the board? Is there anyone in the audience? No, you haven't seen the EAF. But, you know, just in what the discussions were, if they had any comments or suggestions. All right.
And it does, it does positively impact our students in the Bay District as well. So, I mean, no. No, I, I feel very proud about the man. Overall impact being positive is being, so I guess we're going to move on.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify whether the memos that you mentioned, the management board and then the memo from the traffic consultants, that's something that's going to be made available to us, but you can turn on the notes.
I had my problem with the memo that applied to you. Yeah.
Is it the DOT study?
The memo stated April 4, and the one that you have, that goes through the process.
So his memo. They got, they got, they got the traffic study.
The other traffic, yeah, memo stated December 20th, if the spot is key, or, and I if it hasn't been provided to you, then it will. But I'm pretty sure it was provided to you because you updated the traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I'm, okay, so we're settled with AMS for this evening. I'm going to go out of order here and ask Stella and come up here. It's on the Buchanan Running Club. And if John would like to come. Let's just come up to Cody. So we have, in the Village of Buchanan, we have a beautification committee, and we have a new, new club, new committee, the Buchanan Running Club. And we have Stella and John here with us this evening.
Hi, I'm Stella. Very pleased to meet you all.
John, hey, John.
Yeah, we've seen you around.
I asked for a better repeat. So I, I wish I knew how many people I'm speaking to, because I would probably point to more at least, I'm hoping this will suffice. But I just thought it'd be nice to add something to anyone, introduce ourselves.
Okay, I'll pass it down. You need one of the.
So as you'll see, we started last March 2022, and we've had approximately 25 runners run with us since. And we have officially 12 members. We're small, so we hope to get more. Our goal is to gain more runners and walkers. We would like to establish more walkers, which hopefully our mayor will be our first.
I'll be a walker as soon as I get my knee done. I'll be walking.
Yes. And so we've done a couple of things. I'm sure that somewhere or another you've gotten word of us so far. And we plan to do more. But today, I guess we just want to address, the big one is the Buchanan Day, being involved with Buchanan Day, possibly arranging a race. And Coach Bell has proposed a route already that I looked over and it looks good to me. So it would just need to be approved by you guys. I guess you have to coordinate with the chief of police, and we would like to have like giveaways and a medal. And also have the option to do a walk for people who just want to walk or do like a fun run. We'd love to have children, if that's an option. I'm not sure what's involved with that. But that's, I guess, something we can discuss. We'd also like to do like a vendor for Buchanan Day, and we'll talk about that. And the other thing was to, aside from Buchanan Day in terms of involvement, we wanted to have you guys help us nominate an elderly neighbor to do a spring cleanup. You know, soon. That was brought up by Coach. So I thought that was a great idea, and I definitely want to get the ball rolling on that. Those are the things that I wanted to kind of go over with you guys and actually formally, you know, introduce ourselves. If you have any questions, that was another thing I wanted to allow, you know, the space for.
Well, a couple of things we've done, we've been active in two Earth Days so far. We also at Christmas time had adopted family program that we're part of. And then I wasn't part of the thing with the.
Yeah, that was exciting. I have not followed, I mean, I know that, like, shortly after we had that event, we had a lot of people show up, a lot of donations. It was wonderful. But then I found out that they weren't doing so well in terms of keeping the place up. So I'm not sure where they are at this stage. But I would like that to be something, if they're still around, to try to help out in whatever way we can. And what else? We did recently, we did the Earth Day cleaning. I got like Nihal. That was nice. We had the, we collaborated with the Buchanan Beautification Committee, which I'm also a part of. So it was nice to put those together and do something together. And we would like to actually make something bigger next Earth Day. So that's another idea that we have.
Something we can work on going forward with the seniors, you know, to contact the president of the senior club. They could probably direct you if there's a senior that needs help with their yard, you know? That would be great. That's really something nice. The other thing, I, I think that's a great idea to coordinate with Buchanan Day. So, you know, we have to work it out with the chief because, you know, we have to make sure everybody's safe and if he has to bring in extra police or, or whatever he has to do for that day. But that would be a nice community event. The runners, and I know the board would be out there walking. I'm volunteering that.
Any details on the race? Would you envision it being on actual Buchanan Day, you know, during that event?
Yeah.
Length of the race or the fact that.
Yeah.
Throughout the village?
Yeah, so a few years ago, Will Richard, the owner of Fourth Street, he had a, he had a race, raised money for cancer research. And it's just the same course, you know, involves Westchester Avenue, Fourth Street, Center Street, First Street, Tate and Burke Court. And that's basically it's the same course you see that way out.
Yeah, and it would be good if it's Buchanan Day, then when everybody finishes, they can stop back and have a burger, hot dog, you know, which the fire department, you know, barbecues, cooks for us, and then the police department hands out ice cream. So it would just, it would be a perfect combination for that guy.
Just incorporate their award ceremony. I think that's a great idea. I think as you guys are doing this positive thing for the community group. If it's some stuff together, usually. Anything else we can do to help you guys? Please feel free to reach out.
Thank you so much. All right, and we'll work on that. Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
The next engineer, George Palmer, regarding paving. And I have a, we got an interesting email today, and I will comment on that. Just, there's always something going on, right, George?
Yes, there is. So every year, we get together usually with the highway superintendent. So every year we get together usually with the highway superintendent, uh, one of the officials. And we track the roads and we look at what roads need to be redone, um. Last year we didn't do the road, it was a carryover, not previous year, because of basketball prices and whatnot, so. The village board decided to bank some money and have a bigger project in the following year. Um, so we took the old list. We went through it, uh, we gave it to Marcus to circulate. And, um, looking at the numbers, we were at, uh. Uh. One point one million plus. Uh, engineering fee, plus contingency, and we're at one point three million dollars. And the rest of the roads, Bannon, Broadway, Burke, Pratt, and, and, uh. We also added in some valve work, last year we did a bunch of valves, found an emergency kind of situation, these valves were. Um, leaking, so we had to work thoroughly. So, um, this year we're gonna try to do them before we do the roads. Because the paving contractors like to just do cleaning, they don't want to do. Um, the valves work, but we do have, and I asked John Pizella, uh, who's done some of our valve work, and we did put it out to bid. And I wanted to know if they could carry over those costs from last year that we had from him. And see if he's gonna hold his price and see if that's actually the deal, um. That rather than going after bidding those items, uh, those valves and, uh. That's pretty, and then as mentioned today, there was an email from Con Ed. About, uh, Broadway, Broadway is one of the, uh. One of the roads that we put off because we thought Clean Path was gonna come up the road and do something, so we didn't go. And we met with Clean Path. Uh, back in March. And Marcus and I had a, had a, um. Conversation to get a, a little bit better idea of what they were doing. And it's another reason why we held off on the boat ramp, because they were coming in from the water. They were gonna come up, we didn't know if they were coming up the boat ramp, they were coming in once full, what, what the path was. So we had a meeting with them in March with their group. And we talked through the specifics and, and they asked us questions about. How Broadway, we, we nine A, their plan was to come in through Lenzco. Uh, go on, go Broadway, go down, we breathe, go up. On nine A and then get out of the ramp and then go down nine A all the way and they're sitting there.
Those to chrome and then back out, back out to the water.
And then back out to the water.
And then things.
So that's, that was their plan, and the reason they were doing that was because the, um. The river is, uh, a sturgeon and is wire mentally sensitive, so they couldn't keep going in the water, so they have to come on wind and then back out to the water. So, um, so we got the email today about. In the blank, um, someone's planning, Con Ed's planning to do some something with the.
Yeah, there's some dredging going on in the city of Pitskill. And what they're going to do at the bottom of Sixth Street, I don't know if you've seen it, Anthony, and we're planning from the bottom of Sixth Street, there's a big barge there.
Mm-hmm.
And they're going to take the, um, sludge or whatever that they're, they're digging up, bring it to the barge on the bottom of Sixth Street. And then I, I don't know if they're gonna process, process it there, I'm not sure, because it's sludgy, it's.
They're probably dehydrated sometime.
That's where the barge is, yeah.
They're de-watering probably too much because of dredging.
They're watering it down in Pitskill.
They won't take out the Pitskill, drive it out of the river plank, de-water it there and then drive it upstate New York.
And drive it up past Albany.
Yeah.
And then, so what then, then they're gonna do, they're gonna bring it up, go on Highland Avenue during the feast. Um.
That's not gonna happen.
Yeah, so that's, that's the game plan now, just want to let you know, in case you didn't have time to see that today. And then they're gonna come down Broadway and then they're going to go, um, you know, past Lenzco and then go out, you know, um. I.
Luigi Street.
Luigi Street, I just, you know. We, we have it in here, we have, I know Dan, and I know you definitely spoke about doing Broadway, I, I know you had mentioned that last year. And it's projected to be. What was it, George, almost two hundred ninety one thousand?
Three hundred thousand.
Say three hundred thousand dollars. I, under the circumstances, like, I, I don't know what we should do, I don't know if we should hold and wait on that, because I don't know what these trucks are gonna be. They're coming from, uh, since the beginning of June to November. I don't know how, how many, I think they said how many trucks a day, Monday through Friday, don't know what the weight is. I, I don't know if we should invest in that road. Having all that extra traffic, all that extra truck traffic, and what I find very interesting. With the A M S project, we had to go to the city of Pitskill and ask them, you know, or, or send them what our project was. So this was all new to all of us today, we're just finding out today, and this is starting the first week of May.
That's right.
Starting in May, so there's like no communication, like, hey, this is what we're doing. And then there's no communication, the town had to give some type of approvals, I would believe, for that barge on the bottom of Sixth Street. And there's no communication from the town. I, I, I'm not understanding, like, what's the communication problem here?
I really don't know, we reached out to Con Ed back in February. Told them the streets that we were working on and actually told them before that. Uh, Amy, I forget Amy's your last name.
Yep.
But she is their coordinator.
Only for utilities, not for truck traffic. That's the problem.
So she's supposed to coordinate a, any, any projects that, that Con Ed has and let us know, but as Marcus said. She's probably focused in on the gas and then we get the email from the liaison to Con Ed. Which is Luigi and says, uh, oh, by the way. We're coming through here and leaving your night, so. It's, it's, we, we reach out to them in advance to find these things out, if we don't want to pave a road. And have the gas start down, we'll reach out from in advance and they asked us in, in advance what roads we're doing, so. There's a breakdown on, on, none on our end, it's, it's definitely on our end.
Yeah, Con Ed doesn't care, the repave is, is, they don't care. So I, I have a question here, George.
Sure.
Yeah, and, and I, I agree with, with, with Mayor saying here, uh, so Broadway, uh. I, I don't see us milling and paving that. Without, I, I mean, if you want to go in and do some temp, I'd like to walk it with you. And see what we could do for temp. You know, to satisfy the residents, I mean, there's a lot we could do. You know, you could mill a few areas to just, and, and make it passable and drivable. Uh, until we figure out what's going on with Con Ed and this, this other, I, I mean, I can tell you right now, the trucks are gonna be. I mean, depending on what, it, it's gonna be at least eighty thousand pounds.
Yeah.
Each drop, I mean, i- if they have overweight permits, it could be one ten.
No.
Um, so. Uh, it doesn't make sense with that kind of truck traffic and that weight to actually even go near, so I think a temporary fix now, we can walk it, me, you, Scoot, I'd like to be involved. Uh, figure out what we can do temporary. Uh, the other one I'm looking at here, I just to go off, off base for a minute, is Craft, east of Albany Post Road. That mill and pave. That is.
Small section, Bob can tell you about it, we went down there, it's a small section that's.
Is it past the A M S driveway?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I wanted.
Down to where a couple houses are up there and they're really in bad shape.
Okay.
And you really can't, it's down in basically gravel, it's not done all by now, right?
Yeah, it's, it's worn down a lot, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if that, I, I just want to make sure it's past the A M S entrance.
Right.
Because there'll be, I mean, they're gonna take care of all that anyway.
Right, yes.
And I, I can imagine we could probably. Pay the whole road at that time.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, let's not go crazy on Craft. Just do some repair there as well.
It, it was to make it safe.
Okay, that, that's important then, absolutely. But I like to be involved with the walkthrough, maybe Wheels, me, you, Wheels, and Scoot with the walkthrough and figure out how we're gonna tackle, uh, Broadway. Without actually doing a full mill and pave there, because I don't think it's, uh, I don't think it calls for it right now.
I, I agree. It's a problem, like you're saying, it's really a safety surrender part in some spots in a Broadway, you have to do something, the whole thing has to be something.
Yeah, well, we can.
Be done down there that.
Yeah.
There's a piece of curb that's going to. So.
And like I mentioned, we put it off because of Clean Path and. Here we are, Clean Path hasn't really.
No update from Clean Path since we met.
Given us any updates, because again, if they were gonna do it, why should the village pay for it? So I think, I, I agree with the.
Their operation depends on how heavy the wind blows, I mean, they're pulling, it's all energy, I mean, they're, 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 they're based on solar panels and, uh, windmills.
So a temporary, uh, solution right now that's, uh, both effective and makes things safer. If you're going another winter, uh, would be, we, we were lucky, we had a mild, a mild winter, had another winter.
Are you losing the edge of the roads over there, is that what the case is, is it the edge of the roads?
This is up to the curb side. Correct, I have some more about, but on the curb side, we're losing the curbs, they've been hit a couple of times, we have some curb repair.
Yeah, that's in there and there's a five hundred linear feet, like twenty three thousand five hundred, so, you know, we would definitely need that and.
And the other side was not curved at all, a lot of the bigger form to have curved tunnels we're doing. If we do get some more life out of these roads, right, wouldn't we do that?
Well, if you put curb, you're gonna save the road, you're only gonna hold the road together.
I think I wanted, that, that would make it pass, I was pretty, uh. Having a bad door curbs going along, where there aren't the curbs now.
So, so what, if, if we abandoned that Broadway, maybe we could look at another road. That needs. And we could take that money and put it towards that.
Well, uh, the other half of this situation too tonight is that, uh, shortfall, so we, yeah, we have.
So, so let me, let me, let me talk the finances real quick.
We have a million, but we, and I can make.
Yeah, so, um. So, so, um. Marcus, get under the table again. Okay. Nope, it's not me.
Ooh, that's.
We're having some technical difficulties tonight.
Alright, so, so financially, we have a million dollars as of right now, June first, with our new budget. If the board approved the budget tonight, you got another three hundred thousand, so we'll be at one point three, one point three million.
Mm-hmm.
We're still like twenty eight thousand dollars in the hole after that, but we also get CHIPS money, we got about ninety thousand for CHIPS, so we'll be in the black by sixty one thousand dollars. So financial will be done using the money and the budget for this year as well, but then we're done, we're all paving until next year. So financially, we have the money, correct, to do it, so that would work, and we can push that off to another. Potential road for paving, if we'd abandoned the Broadway. Large portion. As long as the bid is awarded after June first, that's all, which, that, that's the time he's gonna be, right?
Yeah. So with Burke Court, can we finish that, complete, we've finished that this year, so that's. Okay. But that's already in there, finishing Burke Court, doing the whole paving, because that's in touch here too, you know. So George, we're gonna ask you.
So when we do that walk, um, that, we usually do a drive around, so when we do that drive around, we can look at, uh, go to our list. We have a list, which one we've done in the past, and then, okay, and Bob, you're fortunate.
Galway Street. Galway Street in the back, the problem with the road is going right now.
Okay.
Outside pieces of, uh, I, I believe we have to finish a piece of Henry Street.
Yep.
That hadn't been done, we should finish that street up completely by. And this, on the set over there.
That's on there, Second Street to Fourth Street, and then Henry Street will be complete, except down by Lindsay, there's a little patch down that one.
We did, uh, we did that, yeah, as you know.
By truck.
We set it on and we have the map.
Okay, so we will, since we have the money, we will have the money as of June first and. You know, just come back to the board, you know, you go out with Bob and, and Anthony and, uh. See what you come up with. I could, that's, I, that's great, because we're, we're doing a lot of roads this year, so that's, that's wonderful.
Oh, and, and by the way, I gave the mayor an update, we met with Con Edison today regarding Tate Avenue, if everyone remembers, they put a new gas line in. Uh, we actually met with them today, they're actually scheduling to do Tate Avenue from curb to curb. So that'll be also redone this year, so there'll be a lot of black.
Are they going all the way to First?
They, yes, they're going all the way to First and to the circle.
From the circle to First.
Correct.
Curve to curve, yeah, correct.
Right.
Because that's the middle of Phil too? Okay.
Past First Street or?
No.
Up there.
Up to, to the last house, um, last house. Yeah, the last house, but that's where that patch, that's where it stopped.
That's where you guys are.
Mm-hmm.
We did do it, uh, Tate Avenue most of a couple of years ago, and then they decided to, uh.
Dig it up.
Dig it up again, oh, it's craziness, you think you're done for twenty years and you're not.
But goodness, they're doing the whole, the whole road again.
No, that's wonderful, thank you.
And Con Ed is coming off gas now, going, putting a lot of energy towards electric.
Correct.
Yep, so it'll save us a little time.
Yes.
Okay, so that covers paving, George, uh, you wanna have the discussion on the M S four annual stormwater?
What? Uh. Every year, the, the village is required to report on stormwater. And do the, uh, an M S four report, and the M S four report goes through, um. All the D and C requirements that the village has on their, um, street sweeping, they've done their head facing thing. Uh, usually keeps the records, um, comes in and takes all that. Um.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good night.
Good night, Dave.
Um, and this is the annual report, it gets put, it's published in the library, it's a copy, it's in total, and another copy is at, um. Uh, downstairs in the Craig's office. And, and I'm sorry, I'm a website.
Website, yeah.
Um, and this is just to let the public know that it's, uh, getting completed and it'll be available. So that's all the announcements for.
Okay. Alright. And we're staying compliant with all these things.
Yes.
Alright, um, do you have any other updates for us, George?
Yeah, yes, we have one more, the, uh, the wastewater lining, uh, the sewer lining.
Sewer lining, yes, um. So we had some camera, uh, camera work done for sewer, for the sewers. Uh, Anacon came in, um, we looked at some lines. And some of the lines need to be, uh, re-lined. And we have a grant, uh, offer, offer money, two hundred and. Two hundred and.
Two hundred twenty eight thousand.
Twenty eight thousand of grant money that would be spent on sewer ends and shark upgrades, the board's already granted.
Mm-hmm.
The, uh, passed the resolution, so, uh, we'd like to put, uh, some lining out the bid. Um, hopefully it won't be bomb infiltration, so. Uh, hopefully at the next meeting, we, um. Authorize this, if I could, but.
And where are those now, that, the pipes that have to be lined?
Uh, the pipes are, one's on weekly, fourth section on weekly right by Greentown Road.
Okay.
Uh, section on Albany Post Road between a little property and the pump station. And another one right out here.
Okay.
So we found some groundwater that's getting into the system from the cammering, so the cammering was, was well worth it to do because we identified, uh. Uh, some water coming in, so we switched, we're switching our plan from, the cheaper thing to do is to do the manholes, so we went, we're going now for manholes. The liners, and the liners, uh, this seems to be, uh, better likely to block.
Alright, so.
And shows up in the, in the last flows too, the last flow is like a lot.
Yeah, so what happens is at the plant, when the storm comes in, the flow goes up and then it drops off quick, so it's time to. It's storm.
The last storm we had the other day went up to over, over four hundred.
And then, and then it drops down in a couple days.
Yeah.
So.
So how long does that lining last?
Uh, it's usually a ten to twenty year product.
Just curious, yeah, good, thank you.
Yeah, good.
And that's all, and that's all.
Good job, George, thank you.
Thanks for the night.
Bye, good night, thank you.
Alright. Um, we are gonna do the update on the boiler, I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, George, you want to say, we'll second, we have a conversation.
Okay, update on boiler, where are we?
So, um, some emails going back and forth, so the option, I've talked to, um, George and I had a conversation with the, um. With our engineer, he highly recommends that we switch the gas, but he has no problem including oil. Uh, either a dual boiler, which includes oil and gas, or just an oil burner as options, so we see what the cost is gonna be. Um, he doesn't know what the actual cost is, the actual cost is gonna be to replace it, he said. Staying with oil saves you probably thirty or forty thousand dollars. Between the work that has to be done to conversion to gas, but his concern is the, is the oil tank, which is a three thousand. Oil tank with about forty eight years old, he says it's a ticking time bomb, he's highly recommended we get away from the oil. Also, our current vendor who maintains our oil burner. Uh, I actually, we were bid on this, he said, if you had a chance to go to gas, you should go to gas, because my concern is the oil tank as well, so he said, the oil tank can. Can last a couple more years, it can fail, but you won't know until it fails. So the good news is that we can look at all the options, get the prices for all the options, and then you guys of the board can determine which way you want to go. So that, I just want to get a determination, because he didn't want to even consider oil at all. And not even consider it on the bid, but if the board wants to consider that, he can add it to the bid.
I just, I just wanted a price for the unit itself, so if we swapped out units. So we get a price for the unit, because the actual, uh, the.
So we get a price for the unit because the actual, uh, the, 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 everything that we have now internally would just would remain the same. There wouldn't be a transition to gas.
Correct.
It would still remain the same. We'd utilize the tank as well. Uh, I just wanted a price on the unit. I mean, you're talking about, when you introduce the gas. Okay, we have to do removal of the tank. Excavation into the building. Uh, you may, you may have remediation at that point that you may get involved with that you don't know about yet. I mean, there's, there's a lot that's involved with the, the, getting rid of the oil. I just want a price of the gap, the oil.
Absolutely.
Burner itself. Uh, I know what the pros and cons are. Like I said in the email, I'm aware of the, the. The, the impact of the oil tank and, and everything else, uh, just a, a unit itself. Price. To come in and replace the unit, whether it be with twin units, twin oil units. Or one oil burner, I mean, the oil burner now, I've looked into it. Myself. They're very efficient.
Mm-hmm.
Compared to what they were thirty years ago.
Yeah, he did, during the conversation, the efficiency is about the same.
Well, it's about five percent different.
Yeah, but he said the pricing is about the same. He said, what you'd be saving on is the meter, the trenching of the gas. So he said, that's why we have about forty, fifty thousand.
And the remediation of the oil tank.
Yeah, but if, if the oil tank leaks, right now it's been tested every year. It's still, they're showing no signs of leaking. And the idea was we can, we can abandon it in place, remove the oil, fill it with the material that's accepted by the D E C. And the oil tank could be abandoned.
And then you're okay, great.
Yes, and then you're done with the oil tank forever. So that, he said, that's his recommendation.
I, I agree with him. I agree with him. I wanted a price on the, on the burner. That's all I want, yeah.
That, that's where, you know, some of my confusion. I put, a couple of months ago, we had this discussion. The board made a direction that we wanted the engineer to provide. The scope of work for the oil burner. And that, that's all we're looking for.
And that's it. And just the price on that. That's it.
We were looking for, you know, we understand the concerns of, of boiler versus gas, but that was the scope of work. We wanted, um, for the bid package.
Okay, so you have more oil, no gas?
No, no, no.
I tried large.
As, as trustee kept, for both options.
Yeah, that's, that's what I said, that's included.
Engineer both, provide it as a big, big package.
Right.
The contract.
Right.
That's all.
Right, that's in there.
But that's what we discussed a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
I don't know where we are.
No, but.
Other than receiving an opinion that he prefers gas over oil.
Correct. So he said, I have, having a bid price, I have a bid packet. If the boy wants, wanted to make sure the boy wants to sit up, because all his customers are abandoning oil. So he'd said that. Uh, uh, his concern was to go out to bid on the oil. And then you're not gonna go with oil. So he wants to make sure that.
Are they banning oil because of the price of it? Or are they banning oil because of the efficiency? Because the five percent difference in the efficiency is.
No, it's the oil tank. No, it's the oil tank.
Yeah, but most oil tanks are above ground.
Yes, but.
Still.
The oil, but you have to, but what he says, you don't have to replace the oil tank by going to gas. You can just abandon it in place.
No, I am well aware of that. And I, I understand his concerns, believe me, I really do. I just wanna get what's the best for the village.
Correct.
Where we, where we get our, our money worth out of what we have pre-existing.
Right. Okay, so he has that in the bid package.
So the only thing, just, just to put this out there is that we do have the connection now. Um, Marcus did work on getting the gas connection. My only concern going forward, if the village ever wanted to go to gas, it might not be an option. Because isn't the state cutting that out? Um, I know they're eliminating gas stoves. I don't know about the heating issue, so.
Right now, right now in this area.
Eliminate oil too.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah.
How we're gonna.
We're gonna have to put windmills on the roof.
Yeah, that's right. And so, so, no, solar panels.
Solution.
Solar panels.
So, you know, it's just, you know, just putting that out there. When we look at the whole package, we gotta understand that, you know. Uh, I believe the state had something, um, within the next X amount of years. They were cutting that out. I, I know they wanted a lot of the, um. Residential and, and different carbon producing buildings to eliminate the carbon and. There's just a lot going on in, in the state right now.
I don't think Con Ed will ever. Ever allow that. The amount of money they dump into the state. Be real hard to sell for Con Ed.
Uh, they're really going heavy into the renewables. Very strong into the renewables.
Yeah, they just spent. Billions on getting repairing gas name.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, so, so, so to get that to circle back around, so it'll be, the options would be two high efficiencies. One conventional, one hybrid and one oil. But we have all four.
On everything.
Yeah.
And then let's make a decision.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, perfect. That's it.
When you say hybrid, you.
Oil, gas.
Oil and gas?
Yes.
You're taking that both.
Correct.
If you want.
Okay.
Alright, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright.
That's good, George.
George, you're good. Thanks.
Just, I'll be in touch about when you, when you and Will can go out and look at the, the asphalt.
Absolutely.
You know, I, I think that'd be, uh, good. I wanna be more involved anyway.
Good.
We can actually, I mean, we could. Bring a couple of rakes if you wanna. I'll get some hot stuff, get some rakes. There you go.
Get out there.
Yeah.
Get that on camera. Okay, um. There's, uh, so we have to continue our budget hearing. So I'm going to make a motion to reopen the public hearing on our budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, okay. Marcus, I had asked you to do just a quick.
Quick update.
Sure.
Um, just for the public, we had a, um, we started the process back in late March. Uh, we had a presentation and a workshop for the public to understand what the options are. Uh, my presentation provided a one point nine, one percent increase in taxes. We also, the biggest issue we discussed was the possibility of the elimination of the pilot with whole tech. So I'm also was suggesting a six percent increase per year to offset that potential increase in the future. Um, there was some discussion back and forth. So we had a point right now, if for the board to consider is. Stay with the one point nine percent, not, not one point nine, one percent increase. Add, add the six percent, add something less than six percent, or you just go with one point, one nine one. The one point nine one covered all the expenses we need to cover for the year. Um, gives everybody, gives the, um, the services to the public the way we've always planned to do. Uh, the benefits of that, I expressed that we have some additional revenues, a reduction in expenses. The department did a great job, try to keep expenses as low as possible. It is a, I think it's a very good budget. We've had some big increases in the past for the public. Um, and a lot of people are hurting and we can discuss, I'm gonna discuss the water for a second as well. But I think the, uh, idea that I took, took upon myself and the department as the board is. Try to keep the taxes low as possible for our residents. We've been hit very hard for the last couple of years. And it's about time that the residents see some kind of. Lower increase that they can absorb and, and, and take in. And hopefully we get a pilot arrangement with whole tech. And that's more increases will continue for the foreseeable future. That's my hope for that. Um, on the general fund, on the water, we worked with, um, trustee Laker. We work with George as well to see what we do on the water rates. Um, so one of the options we discussed was. Going to a quarterly billing process, um, versus a six month process. That will actually reduce the usage of the individuals when you're in a smaller timeframe. So the usage will go down a little bit. But at the same time, we actually are decreasing the rate by a dollar. Which a first rate, which everybody falls into. So if somebody used the same amount of water for the same period from last year. They, they, everybody should see a decrease in their water bill, which actually is gonna go down a little bit. Um, so the, so the options on the board today is the one point nine one percent, six percent, something in between. And on the water rates to go with a quarterly billing process and a new rate structure that are provided to the board. If that all works, uh, Sharon already got the newsletter ready to go, which actually explains a little bit of the, of the water increases and the water changes. For the people getting their new, next, in the main newsletter, when the billing is gonna be. It's gonna be, if we do accept this tonight. The first bill will be a two month bill and the next will be a three month bill. At the same time, we have the commercial users that are monthly. They're gonna go to quarterly as well. So that way, everybody has the same billing cycle. Which actually, which makes the process a little bit easier. It gets more work to the ladies in the office, but now they gotta bill every three months. Um, but I think it's more fair for the residents to be billing on a quarterly basis. They actually should see a overall decrease. So hopefully we got a double bang this year. A little decrease and a little increase in taxes, a little decrease in the water bill. So. Uh, I think it's a, I think it's one of the best years for the village in a very long time that they can see something like this. So. Hopefully the board, I can be happy to answer the questions and this is done, we can move forward and get the notifications out to the public about their water bill changes.
So you said the commercial, uh, was going to go up?
By one, by one dollar as well.
And I, I think this year we were fortunate because sometimes. We, we have, um, our medical that goes up. We have, um.
Retirement.
Retirement.
Uncontrollable.
Also the utility.
Correct.
So it, it's kind of like the stars all lined up this year.
Oh, everything, correct.
And, you know, because there's other times we have seen some crazy increases, you know, across the board. So. You know, we were really fortunate and, you know, and I know, I can, I can speak for the whole board on this too. That, you know, we're, we really want it for the taxpayers to get paid. You know, we know it's been tough. It's been tough being on the board and asking for more taxes too. Nobody wants to pay more taxes. And, you know, we're not looking to hurt anybody, but we're looking to still continue the services and keep our village vibrant and. You know, to come in at this percentage was. Was a great thing to be able to give to the residents this year. Um. I had asked all the questions I had wanted to at the last meeting. I don't know, do, do any of the other board members have anything, big questions or comments or?
Yeah, just going back to, you know, and trying to give the village residents, you know, as, as much of a, a tax break as possibly. Could and, and try and really sharpen the pencils. I know, you know, I took a pretty hard look at, at some of the expenses, some of the proposals. And I know. We had in there in the, um, the office downstairs, you know, an additional staff member. And I don't know how much details will go into that, but, you know, I think we have a great team here now. And, uh, I just would like maybe the board to consider the possibility of just putting that. Additional staff member, uh, that we said a full-time position on hold. Um, as we do have a part-time person and try to, um, you know, revisit it at another time. That's all.
You know, something, you know, we could work on going forward and, you know, we'll work, uh, get the ladies in the office.
Right.
And then see where we go with that.
But I think for this year, I think to, to put that on hold, I think would be a great benefit to, uh, residents.
Mm-hmm. Certainly. I agree.
I, yes.
Um. So we had talked about, Marcus wanted to ask for, um, additional money for, uh, to, to save, to have a tax stabilization fund. I had expressed my concern about that, my thoughts on that. So that would be another thing. Um, that would have been on the table too. But, um. I think the board is, are, are we good with the, the way it stands right now, one point nine one percent?
Well, is that gonna change if we take this position out as a minus?
We can leave it, we can leave it funded. I mean, you could leave it funded, um, you know, because there was some talk, you know, and it's something we'll work on, but there was some talk of. Possibly, uh, you know, starting part-time, somebody part-time too, you know. But that's something, you know, that going forward, we'll discuss and. See where we end up.
And, and, and.
Question.
In that was eighty thousand was budgeted for that? That's without the package, the salary?
And benefits, everything is in there, full-time.
Three.
For a salary of eighty thousand plus the benefits on top of.
Oh, so that's in the budget as well.
Everything's in there.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, okay.
The first concern about that is in the future, we're gonna need to get a seat filled.
Hmm.
Correct? So we're gonna have this expense on this down the road after someone retires, when we don't really. Have the opportunity to have some train to build up each one.
Well, that's why we were talking about maybe part-time to start the training process at a part-time level. But we also have to pull from a civil service list, correct?
Not a deputy treasurer.
Not a deputy treasurer. So, uh, at, at that point, we could use it as a part-time training opportunity. And not put the expense on the taxpayer yet. You know?
Uh, it just seems to me that maybe it's such a, a small increase we're doing now to build that position down.
Well, that's, that's a.
That's a likely about it anyway.
Okay.
I don't know, it's gonna be another. Another hit. We're gonna, we're gonna get hit down a little bit with a few things, I'm sure.
Well, if we hire the other person as the other person retires, then. I don't think we would be keeping three full-time at that point. You see what I'm saying?
So that person would be trained. I understand, but once we do it now, we're, we're, we're good. But I'd like it in the future for that, for that position that we have to save within the rent, county of rent. Excuse me, nothing. But you have a double, basically you, you paying for a shadow. You know, uh, double expense.
With a double. Better.
I, I, I didn't see what you're saying, but you know, we do have initial time to undo it, which is such a small step. We had everywhere, every department, having people ready to be moved on to the next step, you know, that's gonna happen.
No, I'm with you. I think.
I feel about it.
Yeah, no, that's okay. Yeah. That's, that's the discussions we have to have. Alright, um, anyone else on the board? Have any other comments? Because then I'm gonna send it out to the audience.
So we're going with the one point one nine. And.
Nine one.
I mean, one nine one.
One nine one.
Nice to hear.
And the six percent. We're. We're not going.
That's correct.
Holding up on that. I, I'm with that. That, that's, I'm in favor for that as well. And the water. Change, the water change is a hundred percent. Good job.
Okay.
You and Steve for coming up with that. That works perfectly.
Good.
So, since this is a public hearing. I'm going to ask anyone in the audience if they have any comments or questions on our budget.
Eileen, if you have any questions as well, you raise your hand. There you go.
Yeah.
You can always count on Eileen.
I was waiting for that. Okay, Eileen, you can unmute yourself.
Okay, um. What, if we don't go with. Six percent. When would we know what will happen by the next budget? With whole tech and the pilot?
Well, hey.
Yeah, I, I think we will.
Okay, alright. I was just curious because I was going to. Say, even if we cut it in half or put some part into it. That might be helpful, but if you think we're gonna know by the, if we think, if you think we will know by the next budget. Um, I'm good with that.
I, 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 I agree with the mayor. I, I'll roll the dice and say we will.
Okay, alright. That's it. Thank you very much.
Alright, thanks.
Sorry.
Okay, if there's no more questions or comments, I'd like to make a motion. To approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four village budget. Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you, Cindy. Cindy keeps me in line here. Hey, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
No.
Okay, now we can move forward and vote on the village recantment budget twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. And, um, also we are going to add into that the water rates and going to a quarterly billing. And I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. Alright, so I'm going to start with, uh, Marcus. Do you have anything for us this evening?
Uh, the only thing I say is, uh, all right, great update. We met with the Con Edison today. Hopefully we'll get, we'll get that information soon regarding when they thought. Milling and paving Tate Avenue. The other good news is the, uh, uh, Scott met with the company for the sweeping. Uh, they made a deal, uh, May, on the lower village, May sixteen, seventeen and eighteen. The upper village is nineteenth, twenty-second and twenty-third. That, that's gonna be in the newsletter as well. We'll put notification up in the neighborhoods. Hopefully all the cars stay off the streets. So we'll get a street sweeping done.
Maybe we could do a code red too.
Yeah, with Facebook, eBay Blast.
People know this way they won't. You know, park in the street and.
So we put temporary no parking sign up.
Correct, yeah, we're gonna talk to the police and DPW, put some signs up in the neighborhoods and stuff like that, yes. So we're gonna, that'd be, that's great news. We haven't had three sweeping in over a year, so that's a great news. As we, as we discussed, the board approved the change of the water billing. Just since I got everybody on, on, hopefully watches on TV. So the next bill for the resident will be June. That will cover April and May. And the next bill will be September. That will cover June, July and August. And then from there, that point forward, the quarterly, the quarterly process from that point forward. So. Just wanna get that out there. Um Sharon did a great job. She got newsletter and got all the information on there as well.
It's ready to roll.
Yep, she's ready to go.
Looking at me to do some folding, I see that. Anyone else volunteering?
So that's good news. As we discussed, the the truck for the work they're doing in Peachkill. I call Condes and get more details, as the mayor suggested. Soon as I get some more information on that, I'll forward that over to you. Um if you guys wanna be on the conference call, let me know. I'll tell you when I get a call. Steve, anybody else who has been in court asking you more questions that you guys may have, we're going to that process. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Um Stephanie, do you have anything for us this evening? Only an executive. Okay. Who are we starting with here today? Start with Steve.
I really only have, um you know, we received the, an email from a resident in uh in regards to. The tennis courts and I know we've discussed it for several months and I just wanted to see, you know, if we can kinda, I know we have developments coming and. With money definitely set aside from those developers, but if we can just. Give us a board, discuss, you know, some things to do, at least to address the the tennis court. In the session, but uh just an overall game plan as as far as uh the recreation and use of the pavilion and and so forth.
Again, uh the quick little update on the tennis courts, um the guys are gonna be fixing that sinkhole as you suggested. They'll be working on filling the crack for the. That was some camp to be done. It it's interesting, but I was talking to George about this in front of you left. We're gonna talk about possible pickleball tennis courts and I realize he actually does that kind of work. So in city of Peachkill, uh if everybody knows. The park, the Pew Park, there would usually be two clay courts in front and then the tennis courts behind. They actually, if you drive by it every day, they actually tore out the two clay courts. They're actually gonna replace one of the clay courts with. I think four or six pickleball courts. And then next to it, there used to be a clay court. Um they don't have enough money to do that work to turn it into a grass area, but they wanna put more pickleball courts in there as well. So I asked George to provide the board with an estimate, what would be to turn turn one tennis court, either refurnish everything for tennis courts. Or if you wanna refinish one into a pickleball court and leave the other tennis court, we'll give you an option. So George is gonna work some numbers out for that too.
What's the the surface of it?
It's the same as tennis. It's just the line is smaller. The line is lower.
Yeah, it's all blacked out.
Yeah.
Possibly could be done under the pavilion.
Oh, you could do that on the pavilion too as well, yeah, yeah. You could do either one.
Yeah, pavilions, you know. Very much underutilized, I feel. It should be used.
So, so either the option I can give you price, what a pickleball court versus tennis courts, and then wherever you wanna place them. That's something you guys can decide exactly.
Cause then we have to talk to Stephanie. To release that money out of that fund.
Or the code, the word, the recreation.
The processes, what we have to do to do that. Cause I I don't know what's gonna force to do a pickleball court, I, you know, but we have the money.
We'll soon find out.
We'll soon find out.
Yeah, so.
Or or refinish in the tennis court. So you got price.
Lot of options, but we should book into it and try to get something done.
Yep.
Good, it's the season now, right? All right, good. Um that's it for you. Bob, what do you have for us? Okay, all right. You're a newbie. You'll have a lot.
After thirty years.
Dan, what do you have for us?
No, just to reiterate what Steve was saying, I think um, you know, I I. I did see the one, the one letter from uh one of our residents in relation to the pickleball court. I think it's, you know, it'd be a great addition to the. Community. I think we get more use than what's. You know, a tennis court would get used out of that. It's something else, you know, people are catching on with. It's. A little easier to like from what my understanding is. I know I would like to use it, so. I'd like to see that happen if it's possible. And I'd just like to say that um. Great job on the budget. Thank you, Sharon. Thank you, Stephanie. Marcus and um Cindy. Lot of good work.
Thank you.
Anthony, what do you have for us?
Well, um like I do every, like, well, last spring I did. And being that Coach John Bell is in the audience. I like to tell our residents, slow down. There's people running, there's people walking. You know, let's obey the speed limits. Uh people are walking dogs now and the weather's getting nice. Pay attention to. The speed limits and you know, and and let's be safe out there, uh especially on Tate Avenue. I find that that's the. You know, the cops, the police have been doing a great job, but I just want, you know, just stay, stay aware of your surroundings. Steve, the pickleball, I saw the email. It's a great idea. I think we should get rid of both tennis courts, if you ask me. And make a bowl pickleball courts. I think uh nobody uses them now. Let's resurface them. Let's find out how we can release direct money and resurface them and do what we gotta do. I think that would really be. A good uh. A good jolt for the community. I mean, I I I. I see it all over the place.
Yeah.
Still, I I mean, I'm working in Queens, Manhattan, and and I see it all over the place. So I I think we need to uh really pick up on that. I think it's a good idea.
Get the price, we can uh.
Yeah. And as far as that kinda dredging and the trucking, I have a uh. I'll look into that. I'm I wanna work with Marcus on that to find out if we can uh figure out their their schedule because. I know the guy who owns the barge and everything else and what what's the, what the process is and. And it does affect my fees.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, it does.
So I mean, if we're gonna have to really look at now, I really have to look at.
Oh, absolutely.
So I will get into that and and I'm looking forward to walking the blacktop with with wheels over there, figuring out how we can. Make the best of our money with our asphalt.
Oh, you know what I forgot to ask too? Um I know uh. Another trustee had asked about it going in uh with the bid with the town.
For the paving?
Yeah.
Yeah, George is talking to them. See if it works, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, George is good, like, you know. So good to try to get the roads done sooner, get it going sooner because then, you know, we have that other option too. That if that works out.
Absolutely.
You never know. So um.
One more thing.
Sure, absolutely.
Uh Coach Bell. I would like to try and run with you one of these days.
All right.
I wanna join the club.
Get Stephen with us.
That's what I wanted. That was my next comment. I could use the motivation. And and great job on that. What you guys are doing is great.
And that's gonna be great. The Cannon Day, we can watch Anthony run.
Yeah, I'm I'm gonna, I have to prepare for it.
You're gonna have to train. Okay, so I just have a few things. Um this Thursday night at six o'clock out at the town hall. Uh the Indian Point Decommissioning Oversight Board is uh, it's gonna, that I have their, one of their meetings. Tonight they're taking comments, so I'm sure it's gonna be a dilly of a meeting again. One of the things I'd like to get consensus from the board is, and I'm sure we do have it, um. Riverkeeper wanted to put, instead of discharging the water, okay? It's a, it's it's a big topic. Um there's a lot of information that hasn't come out. Um so what Riverkeeper has suggested, that there'll be eighteen thousand gallons or more tanks. Put on the Indian Point property. Um as Dave Lockbaum, who will be here next week with us, is a um independent scientist, nuclear expert. Um he says that these tanks are not safe, that they do break. And they're also vented from the top. And so if they're vented from the top, whatever is in there. Um will be put out all over the property. So it comes out and it's, it goes through the property. But it also uh becomes airborne. So that is something, you know, that we're going to, we're gonna come out and and make a statement after these couple of meetings. I think it's appropriate at this point. And that's one of the things those tanks are not a benefit to the village. Because if that stuff comes out, whatever is in there. You know, it could potentially contaminate the property and that's gonna push out much longer for us to get that property back. So our theme was, that's why I asked you all about your your shirt sizes. There's a catch. I was, I was gonna buy you guys shirts, but let me see tomorrow night's meeting if they're still pushing for it. If not, we're pushing back hard. This shirt is gonna be no tanks, no tanks and a picture of a tank. So. The board, we're gonna fight that because that's, that's not a good thing for the community. Um the other thing is um. For them to put the tanks on the property, you know, and Peter is our building inspector. He's here listening. They're gonna need a permit. So I'm going to say Thursday evening that the Village Buchanan will not be issuing the permit for those stressors. And that will, that will settle that. That is one of the alternatives that's being used instead of discharging the water into the Hudson River. So that's not a good thing. So there are other alternatives. We'll see how it turns out, but that's not gonna be one of the alternatives that's gonna be used. Um next Wednesday night, we have our regular board meeting on Tuesday. Next Wednesday night. We are going to have an informational meeting. Uh we are going to have Richard, stop playing with the bunny rabbits.
I I don't know what you gave him to me.
Um.
Maybe wanna chocolate bunny?
So.
Gotta start my diet. John's watching me over.
Yeah, better get training you too. Uh so Tuesday night is our regular board meeting. Wednesday night is a special informational meeting. We will have uh Rich Baromi here. From um Holtech. Um I've asked him to discuss the process of what happens with this this water. And then also Dave Lockbaum, who once again is the independent uh nuclear scientist. Um he's going to also have some explanations of what's going on. So. For us to make an educated decision, we need to hear both sides of the conversation. So. We're going to be getting some facts from the other side. Cause we have a group of people here. We have different agendas. So we have the anti-nuclear people. They have their agenda. We have um, you know, uh Holtech, you know, they're they're, they have a business. And you know what? What amazes me, this is the one thing that really drives me crazy. There are the, the anti-nuclear people, oh, you know, this is terrible. You know, Holtech is gonna make some money doing this. And I'm like. Well, wait a minute. You know, there were only, so everyone knows, there were only like two companies that bid to do the decommissional. So and of course, we all know Holtech was chosen, but think about this. What if nobody did on that? And anyone that's doing this job, I don't care if it's Holtech, I don't care who it is. You're, you're taking a risk because there are so many variables as you're doing this. So you know what? It might, there might be more stuff that has to be done. There might be less stuff. Who knows? But there's gotta be somebody that does this. So to say that is kind of like. Yeah, people don't do things to lose money. I I know that's a news flash to the to the anti-nuclear people, but anyhow. So I would like to see a lot of people coming in. Please send your questions in ahead of time to office assistant at Village Buchanan. Any questions or comments you have would greatly be appreciated. Um I can't think of anything else because that seems to be what we're busy with, with all that with Holtech right now. Um so any comments from the board? Oh, and I do wanna thank Sharon and Cindy um for offering to do, I know it's a lot more work, it's a lot more folding. And and putting out all the billing for the quarterly water cycle, but thank you for, you know, stepping up and and doing that. We appreciate it.
Eileen, how do I have?
Eileen, yes ma'am.
Okay. This, uh this has to do with um a message from the acting superintendent. Um Memorial Day Parade is going to be canceled um this year after consultation with our local law enforcement partners. And school resource officers, we've decided that outdoor memorial. Parades and ceremonies will not take place in the district. I was just wondering if any of the board members had uh spoken to Shane about this or heard. Any comments from um our local police department?
I've not heard anything and I usually look forward to that. That's so cute. You know, with the kids watching them with the march and the the ceremony. Marcus, could you follow up with that and see what what's going on with that?
I call him right now if you want. I can call Shane right now if you want.
No, we need to find out if they were contacted, right?
Yeah, my bigger question is, were we contacted? Because it would have been, if they did the same route, it would have been up Bannon Avenue. Over Seward and into the back of the school. And then um at the memorial. The high school.
And then BV, you know, they go from the school up Forest Street, your Center Street, down Forest Street. And pavilion, so.
So this is, to me, this is another freedom that is being taken away from the kids. Um because I'm not quite sure exactly what they're going to discuss or how. The explanation of how we have a Memorial Day. Uh will be.
Why we have a memorial.
Right, so um at least with the parade. You know something, but now I'm not sure what they're going to know. And it just seems like another freedom taken away. So I would like.
We'll get an answer, Eileen. We will have an answer by next Tuesday.
Okay, that would be fine. I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Thing we thought of about the parade that was canceled.
Oh, Marcus is on it. Marcus is on it already. Let's get an answer.
Their, the Memorial Day Parade, they say it was canceled due to consultation with public safety. But it, it, but it wasn't, but it wasn't your recommendation and your suggestions. Nope, nothing with.
Did they consult with him?
Did they consult with you? Did they tell you they were doing?
They never contacted them at all.
Police Department, not a local police department.
Who's ahead of our school board?
Did it with the county, not with the village. Thanks Shane, I appreciate it taking the call. Thank you. There was no consultation with the village or discussion with the village.
That's.
To cancel that.
Not good.
All right, so in other words, they didn't contact our police department.
The county of Westchester, police.
Contact the Village Buchanan, but they may have consulted with.
County police. That's correct.
And the two of our parades are, the Buchanan PV is involved both parading.
Right. They were just told it was canceled.
Well, that's a problem.
Yes, I I believe it's a problem also. Um you know, I don't know what to do about it, but. You guys.
Yeah.
There's a lot going on in the school district right now, so.
Yeah, there's a lot. Dan is our school, he's on and he is going to contact the superintendent and uh get to the bottom of it and uh, you know. We all know people on on the board, the school board also. So there needs to have a conversation on that. That's uh, that's unacceptable.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you. Okay. World is changing fast. Um, hey, I'd like to make a motion now to go into executive session to discuss litigation and personnel.
Second then.
All in favor? All right, thank you all for coming.
Good night, Eileen.
Have a great Buchanan night.